Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. It's 6:30 in the evening. It's beautiful outside and a gentle Oregon rain has watered my yard so it will grow again and again and yet again. And I have, and I think the council reactions means I'm not the only one with one of those. Councilors are all here in present. Folks, we have minutes from the April 23rd, also the April 23rd Joint Independence Monmouth Meeting, and also the April 27th Hotel Tour. Do they meet with your approval?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I heard that is a yes, is a, that's a motion.
To approve.
And who, is that a, somebody say down there, yes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay. Thank you. Everybody's watching the Blazer game. I'm, I'm gonna go into my mayor report. I have a variety of different things I've been involved with lately. I did this last weekend get to attend the memorial service for Mayor Fairchild, former mayor of Dallas and a longtime good friend. There were mayors from throughout Oregon, former League of Oregon Cities Presidents and others who came to, to that event. It was a very, very nice event. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of taking Mike Danko's son and his mom on a tour of our community to show them the work that he had done over the years. And his son hadn't seen the projects for a long time. He remembers it from the before time. And so it was a very, it was a wonderful time. Sean Irvine had a play, a chance to join us, and that was wonderful. Had a chance to testify at the legislature on some legislation that would not be good for communities, cities in Oregon, litter, limiting the effective use of enterprise zones. And so a number of us showed up and it was really nice that people from throughout the state came. And our city manager joined me, but they cut him out. So he had to sit there and listen to all of us and, but it worked out really well. I was able to try to help them understand. And I had a chance just recently, Yul took me through Beast Brewing, his project that he's been working on for a while. I was very impressed with what it looks like on the inside and they're getting very, very close for, for that. So anyway, with that, that's probably enough of me talking for a moment. Let's have our city manager.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to bring the applications, but you have a budget committee appointment.
Thank you.
It's Katie Johnson, who lives on Monmouth Street. She's a former, um, county on the principal and she's retired and she's living, living for the city.
And she did attend the budget orientation yesterday with staff people. And sorry, we didn't put a piece of paper in front of you, but I am recommending that, that Ms. Johnson move forward and we appoint her to the budget committee. I hope it's okay. I didn't, we didn't get paper in front of you. Is that okay with everybody? Please do.
I move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. We have a full budget committee. Now, come again?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies again.
Mr. City Manager, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oh, wow. Just a few things, really mostly just some reminders and some things that are coming up. So we've been talking about the new website. There's going to be a user experience workshop. We've been talking about it currently scheduled for May 31st. Back up if you want. And so if you have anybody that would like to participate in that, just please let us know so we can get them out of the news and make sure that they, they are able to get in and take a first peek and make sure that that website is up and running and will, when we launch it to the public, it will be looking as good as possible again. Just a quick announcement, budget meetings, uh, May 15th, 22nd, and 29th. So tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, dinner for budget committee members will be provided. So just let you know it's downstairs in the event center, but starting tomorrow night, you'll get your copy of the budget and we'll go through it and go from there. We have, take a look at the forecast agenda. It's in your packet, but we're looking at potentially canceling the meeting on the 28th unless some business comes up. We've been able to balance things out. Balance things out. We have a lot of meetings coming up with the budget committee. We figured if we don't have the meeting on the 11th, we can probably take care of the business at the first June meeting, but certainly if there's a desire to have that, we'll, we'll make it happen. I just wanted to let you know that we do try to look ahead and make sure that we're not having too many meetings for you. Next Tuesday, we're hosting the Ford Institute for Community Building and their Visioning and Action Tour. They're taking people from rural communities on a tour of other rural communities who've done or are doing community visioning and action planning to learn best practices. So they're coming here to see what we've done in the past and what we're currently doing and what we plan on doing in the future. We have a few different places for them to, to meet and to tour, but they're gonna be here for quite a while that day and we're really looking forward to, to sharing and learning from them as well. We had a photographer in town the last couple of days. We're really working on trying to make sure that we have current pictures and current stuff for our tourism and just economic development and just our website and everything else. So certainly we had someone in town, if you saw them or somebody else saw them, they were just here just kind of taking pictures. Good time to do it because it was really sunny and clear, but we'll make sure those in different formats as that happens. We were able to select a consultant for the TSP update. That's an ODOT process, so it takes a bit. The next steps are to develop the scope and the contract and we anticipate getting that started in late summer. So it's continuing to move forward, but I've been involved with these in a number of jurisdictions and over time and when you're in the state process, it just takes a while. So it's moving along fine and, but it's just, it's, it's, it's moving along fine. On June 21st through 23rd, we partnered with an international entrepreneurship group called Techstars to host a Rural Startup Weekend. Techstars is a group out of Colorado. It's a week-long, weekend-long event designed to connect entrepreneurs and generate business ideas. And as we've talked about, we really are trying to generate new business ideas, new businesses to start as an incubator, start as a business in independence and grow and become a much bigger company in the future. So with that, that's all the announcements I have, but I'm here to take your questions.
Questions for the manager? Okay. We'll keep moving. If everyone wants to watch the Blazer game. Ms. Butch, I think you have the next part. Good evening.
Good evening. So I have two things, the third quarter financial report and then a follow-up on our audit finding and the, our auditor had explained what that was. It was a journal entry that I missed and because of, because they are also helping us to prepare our financial statements, they had to make that a finding. And when a finding like that is reported to the state along with our, when our audit is submission, submitted, the state requires not only the, the statement of finding and the solution that we talked, we talked about it, the city manager and I talked about it and this was the solution that was recommended by the auditor. Well, then the state requires that the governing body also accept that that is our good plan or solution. So that's the formality on that. So I'll take questions on either the state, the
Questions.
Report or, or that.
Anybody have questions?
Yes.
We have material in our, in our packet, so I just want everybody to know that.
We do. I'm, I am just curious about the letter from the state that cited a reply within 30 days of receipt. Was that reply made?
The, partly because of what's been going on in my life the last few months, this was an oversight on my part. Also with the, when the audit was submitted to the state, this on, on page 23, that was also submitted and I thought that that was, would be good enough because it says the responsible officials and plan corrective action. Well, that isn't quite good enough. They want a formal note where the council, the council has adopted that plan as well.
To make sure we've seen it, know it, and have dealt with it.
Right. So we need it in the minutes that you adopted that.
And they're okay with the late response on this?
They will be, yeah. Yeah, they just want it, yeah.
Additional questions?
I just had a question about the, the missing entry. When was that, when was, when did that happen? When did that not occur?
That was a, like a one-off type thing. It was, had to do with the refi, the refinancing of the ICC and the Minnet loans. It was a combination. It was the big, that final big refinancing. Well, I missed one of the entries and so it's
Was it a year-end thing or was it?
Yes. It was a year-end thing. I could've done it at any time following that refunding, but it was just a missed entry. And it was large because, you know, it was a $6 million refunding, so.
Oops.
It was a large entry.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Stuff happens. Is everybody okay? Please do.
Can I ask a question about the third quarter financial report memo in here? There's a statement about the second paragraph from the bottom of the first page. There is also the allocation of the new office manager position, which was budgeted at a lower rate than she was hired at. What position is that and why was somebody hired at a lower rate than, or hired at, budgeted at a lower rate than hired?
So when we hired that office manager position, we had a, we had not completed a rate study yet or a salary survey and that was in progress about the time we adopted the budget. And that didn't get completed until like October of 2018. So it was well after the budget was adopted. And so we had planned for less, that position costing less than it actually came out.
And the rate study showed otherwise?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
And will that rate study be good for one year, two year?
The salary survey, we generally keep them about three years.
And did you do that in-house or was it done?
No, that was done by Local Government Personnel Institute with
LGPI. Additional questions? We do have an action item here. If someone would, on page 21, I believe it, it's all mushed in there.
So I think it's the, I moved
That's correct.
Yeah.
I moved to approve. The action plan is described in the 2018-1 Schedule of Findings and Responses. Is that the one?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That was included in the June 30th, 2018 Auditor's Report.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. I, unless somebody has a particular question for the IPD report, we'll just keep going unless you have anything you'd like to add, chief.
I have a question. We added a couple of new areas in the report and I guess a few factors, whether it's of interest, specifically school-related incidents and traffic accident information where they're occurring off and entering. So if you have it, we decided to determine it and we included it in this report for the first time. So if you find that it, you know, worthy of interest, we'll take time to do it, but it is.
Council members?
Thanks.
I do too.
Folks think it's a good idea? Okay.
You guys have been busy.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate your report. Let's go talk about Polk Well Field number four. Good evening.
Good evening, here, Council. Our packet has three items tonight. The first is the new well at Polk Well Field, which is on the north side of town. That well is in our master plan from 2014. It's identified in there as for an expansion. So the city hired consultant GSI Water Services to look at the hydrology in that area and select a well site. They did so, so we moved forward with the bid process and the low bidder was Jones Drilling out of Lebanon, Oregon. The bid was $122,186. And I wanted to note that that, it was our only bid unfortunately, but we did have 12 drill companies solicited, but due to the time of the year, the specifics of the well, generally some of the wells we drill don't quite have all the engineering in them, but this is an important well for us. So some of our local companies did not have the equipment to actually drill the well. So we had one low bidder and that was Jones Drilling. I want to note that it was 37% higher. I just want to note that, so you know, and we did talk to the engineer who did the engineer's estimate on that. We talked to the driller as well and due to the, the equipment that he's using takes more personnel, the time of year and schedule, even though it's this fall, most of the drillers in the area are booked up. So those were two of the reasons. The other reason was the aforementioned specifications of the well. And the city engineer did review it and gave a recommendation to award the bid.
Questions about the, the well?
I'm assuming there's no reason to think that should we go back out and bid it again that we're gonna get anybody else?
Absolutely.
I think we've really exhausted.
The schedule would be, would be our issue. And that ended up being probably the issue in this, despite giving nine months ahead, that wasn't quite enough time for some of the drillers. That was the response because we called them and asked why they didn't solicit the bid. So, and that was the response we got from three of them.
Thanks for following.
We could rebid again, but it would be, put us through the 2020 year.
Okay.
So is there a drilling season? I mean, do you just do it like in the summer, fall, or can you do it at any time of the year?
The specific time you want to do it as a municipality is in the late fall because that's when your aquifers stress the most.
Okay.
So when we test that well, we want to test it during the worst conditions possible for that well to see what, what it will produce.
So if, if we were to rebid it again, we'd want to bid it for the next 2020 fall?
Yeah, it would be 2020. And we probably wouldn't do that. We would probably bid spring.
Just because you'd need to get it done?
Yeah, the construction season. I'd lose another construction season is what would happen because once we developed the well, then we have to design the well for its output. We don't know what it's gonna produce yet, so that'll depend on the power it needs, the size it needs. So there's several steps that fall in and the farther I get behind, the farther it pushes the well completion out.
So with escalating costs and things, by the time, the savings we might get would probably be eaten up?
As you know, we've rebid it since I, since I've been here and we've been successful at it. And this one, I don't feel that we would be, neither did the engineer, neither did the consultant. We think with the rebidding cost, again with the economy going up and we may not get any more bidders than we did this time despite bidding 18 months out.
Okay. Additional questions?
I think I just have more
Please do.
A comment. So I'm prepared to vote on this tonight with the statement that my vote does not endorse the driller on behalf of my employer, like separate from that.
Thank you. Appreciate you making that clarification. This is an action item?
I'm, I move to award bid of the new well project to Jones Drilling Company in the amount of $122,186 and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Okay, you've got the next one.
My second item is an IGA between Polk County and the City of Independence. There was a grant available in, last fall that I honestly don't remember if it was Polk County that approached us or we approached Polk County, but it was for the intersection of Hoffman and Gun Club, which is identified under TSP of needing improvement. We've done some improvements to that intersection in the last 18 months. However, there was still sidewalks, crosswalk, and possibly a light. It is one of the busiest intersections in Polk County and the busiest that Polk County manages. So together with Polk County and Lead, we applied for a grant for the amount of $880,000. That leaves a city contribution of $100,000 and the county's match of $76,000. That is based on the project's pricing in that jurisdiction. So our price was, I don't have the breakdown here, was $500,000. And so our 20% match of that is $100,000 and then theirs was $330,000 or so and their price, their match was $76,000. That's why there's a price difference in there.
This was something anticipated in our budget, wasn't it?
Yes. It is in the current budget to be adopted. It's in the proposed budget.
Yeah, it's, it's not in this, our current year's budget.
Not the adopted budget, it's in the proposed budget.
Proposed budget. Okay. And what's this gonna do? This, yeah, I mean, please.
So it's a Safe Route to Schools grant. It will put sidewalk on the west side of Gun Club Road and at the intersection of Hoffman and Gun Club, it will put sidewalk or path, that's up to the county's discretion, on the western, southwestern portion of Hoffman Road running to Mama City Limits. And for us, it'll run from the intersection of Gun Club and Hoffman to Marigold. There's currently no sidewalk there.
You said something about a light there as well. Is that part of this?
It was part of this in, in the beginning. The, the state decided that it did, that the light itself did not qualify for the Safe Route to School grant. There is a grant coming up, though, the light does qualify for it. So we will be applying with that jointly as well to Polk County.
Is that a lighting or is that a
Traffic light.
Traffic light.
Yeah.
And you said paths rather than a sidewalk that the county is putting in?
Yeah, it's, it's up to their discretion on, on the design, so we don't have anything designed yet. Kittleson will be the engineer on it, given we adopt the IGA, but
Okay. But it will be
I don't know what their intent is.
It's not just gonna be dug up a little bit and bark dusted, is it?
No.
Okay.
Paved path.
It's gonna be a hard path.
Okay.
I still don't know if it's gonna be
That's what I was looking for.
I imagine it's gonna be a curb and sidewalk.
Good.
Okay, that, that was kind of it.
Additional questions?
I appreciate that this is going forward. I think that that's, yeah, well, again, with the development that's gone out there, it all fits and that's major arterial.
Okay, this, council members, this is an action item. If someone would care? Anybody?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign an IGA with Polk County for the purpose of cooperating in the Safe Route to School grant, road improvement for Gun Club Road, Hoffman Road intersection.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I think you have one more.
The last thing I have is an IGA with Polk County for use of their county work crews. This is through the corrections department. The cost of that is $300 a day. We have identified two possible uses for that. One would be after flood events or emergency events. That could be a source of labor for us. The other would be during, we have an increased amount of events here and it does tax the public works department, both in setting up for them, taking down and assisting in them. Gun Flood Road and Stryker Road, Highway 51, Monmouth, Main Street, all of these roads don't see a lot of attention during those times and the reason is we don't have enough public works employees. So in talking with the city manager, we've identified five or six avenues that we're looking into. This is one of them. So they are experienced road crews, they bring their own equipment and so they would more likely, what we've identified with that would be Highway 51, doing the weeding, cleaning of the beauty strips along there. And it would generally be before the 4th of July. And then public works would maintain that throughout the summer. They would do the initial work and then public works would maintain it.
Questions?
Where does the $300 a day go?
That goes to Polk County.
The prisoners get no pay for their work?
That's a great question. I haven't asked it. I can find out if you'd like.
I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a decision without knowing whether or not any of this is going to the people doing the work.
Okay.
I'm all in favor of prisoners working on projects that give them skills to be used when they get out of prison or jail, but it seems exploitive to me to have them cleaning up our weeds and trash.
They do volunteer.
I understand and if I were in, in a jail, I'd probably want to get out in the sunshine too, but I still think it's exploitive.
Other comments?
I don't know that we have the right or the ability to change the, the laws concerning what prisoners are paid. And I believe that's an agreement that exists with Polk County and the people, well, not that they agree to it, but that's a preset amount and a program for that.
Other comments?
Who, who does the supervision? Do they have their own supervision?
County does, yeah.
Okay. Polk County does?
Yes.
Okay. The corrections people or they're, okay.
Yeah, I've used correction folks, yeah, it, when I worked at the university, they did a bunch of work for us. It generally takes one to two public works personnel to work with the group. So what would you like to do? Would somebody like to, if you want to make a motion, you want, what, what would you folks like to do?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign an IGA with Polk County for the purpose of cooperating. Whoop, that's the wrong one, isn't it?
69?
Excuse me.
Okay, it's on your screen.
Thank you. I move to authorize the city manager to sign an IGA with Polk County for services with Polk County Corrections.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay, it's a four to two. The motion passes. Thank you very much. What I would ask though is can staff get back to counselors that asked about the payment as a courtesy, please?
We won't be happy to.
Thank you. I want to make, I'd like to close that loop.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go Blazers.
Okay. I think we have some alcohol in the park. Good evening, Ms. Irvine.
What a great segue.
I'm the hat guy, right? So yeah, Mayor and Council, pleasure to be here. Yeah, so I've got two proposals in front of you. The first has to do with a request to offer samples and sell wine at the farmer's market in the Amphitheater Plaza. The application is attached, it has been reviewed by the police department. As you're aware, council's role is to, in the park, in all parks, alcohol is not permitted unless authorized by council. So that is what this request would be for is essentially approving the location for the, the service of this, of the, of the wine. So like I say, the first one is for serving, tasting and serving wine during the farmer's markets. This would be on Saturdays, basically through the rest of the summer. They'd like to get going, I believe Memorial Day weekend. If you've got questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for the presenter.
So in both of these, well, the farmer's market one, there'll be no open containers leaving the tent area.
Correct, yeah. The farmer's, but in this one, it would be strictly within the tent. They'd be offering samples and they could buy a closed bottle of wine to, to walk away with.
Additional questions?
I just wanted to note, this is all the way through September, so it goes beyond the summer series. And, and I do know the person who made this application and she has a lot of good experience in that industry.
Is everybody okay? If someone would make a motion?
I move to allow a temporary alcohol concession at Riverview Park during the Independence Riverview Farmer's Market by Acor Winery for Memorial Day weekend through September 2019 in the area designated contingent upon city receipt, no later than July 1st of a renewed insurance certificate.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Ready, looks okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. I think you have the next one, too.
Yes, the next one is similar but different. It's the National Seriuses Foundation. They have, this would be the third, third year they have come to bring their, the ride, fundraising ride to the community. They do like to have kind of an after-party for the event down in the park this time, not actually in the plaza. You'll see, you can see from the map where they would like to locate their, their beer garden. It is, you know, a beer garden style, so it'd be an enclosed area, not just kind of wandering anywhere in the park with, with the alcohol. Again, I think fairly, fairly self-explanatory with the application and the staff demo, so if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for staff? Okay, if someone would recommend action?
I move to allow a temporary alcohol concession at Riverview Park during the National Seriuses Foundation's Ride NPF event on June 9th, 2019, in the area designated.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, council announcements?
Well, I have a, thank you, I have a question before we get into the announcements. We've all gotten a number of emails from a party that is interested in getting the use of Roundup or similar exfoliants, defoliants, whatever they're called.
Defoliant.
Onto the council agenda, is this something that is worth consideration, or is there a process that we can suggest to this person?
Let's suggest that they, have they met with city staff at this point yet?
I, I don't know about the specific emails you're referring to, but I certainly have talked to at least one individual for about 45 minutes regarding this issue, and certainly listened a lot. Didn't have a whole lot of opportunity to, to give input, but it's something that, you know, we look at, not only for Roundup, but for all the different type of chemicals that we do. We tend to look to the state for guidance, because they do a lot more work on this than we do. So we certainly have our eye on it. Certainly, there was just another case this last week that was proven that Roundup caused cancer in some of the areas. So as evidence comes out, as we study more, and as we work with the Lucky Mute Watershed, we certainly have our eye on it. If you want us to take additional action, let us know what you would like us to do, but it's really something that we're aware of.
Can I ask, in light of some of the legal issues that have come up, I'm sure that CIS, our insurance company, is probably keeping an eye on that, how it might be worthy of checking with them and seeing what, where they're headed on, on some of that?
Yeah, and we're in the process of adopting a new safety manual, which addresses a lot of these, these issues. CIS just recently published that, and so there are probably some training issues that we want for our employees as well. Certainly, you know, it's one thing getting in the watershed, it's another thing if you're touching the material directly. So we're, we're working on making sure that we have CIS's guidance, which is in the safety manual, as well as making sure people are practicing best practices related to the material themselves, if they're using it, so.
Do we have the authority to prevent residents from using Roundup? Or similar products?
That would be a legal question that we would have to ask our city attorney. I, I think, you know, the vein I've rooted in is the city using it, or the state using it, or other agencies using it right away. As far as trying to prohibit residents from using it, I would have to ask our city attorney.
I think enforcement would be difficult, to say the least.
Well, that's where we'd need to have the, the legal foundation. And since this email appears to be addressed only to the council members, I'm going to hand it off to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass it along to
Thank you, thank you. And as far as announcements go, yes, there is Discover My Town, which is a chamber event that encompasses both Monmouth and Independence, is coming up in, on the second weekend in June. Tickets are online at, at the Chamber website, or they can be had, I believe, off of Eventbrite also. And I can't think of anything else that is pertinent.
I can actually
Go.
I can actually mention one. I just wanted to make mention that on Memorial Day, CrossFit Kiowa over on Lloyd Lane will be doing their annual fundraiser Murph event, where they do a big workout, and all, actually all the funds they raise from that goes to PAVE, PAZ, assisting veterans. So anybody who's interested can find information on their website.
Great. Over on this side?
Excuse me? Oh, information on their website.
Who was it?
Oh, who's hosting? Oh, the CrossFit. Yeah.
Anything on this end?
Just a reminder for those, well, inside and outside of the building, that your ballots are due on the 21st. There's a drop box in the lobby, and if you happen to be in the Ash Creek Water Control District, you'll find the levy on the back of your ballot, so.
Okay. It was on the front of mine. If you live in the Ash Creek Water Control District, it's on the back. It's an oddly shaped little district.
Anything else from folks? I have a couple of things. I wanted to just compliment staff on some creativity. I attended, as many, I'm sure many of you also, the Tatcha Truck event.
Yes.
And was a huge event, and well-received on all fronts, and people were, thought it was very creative. It was a lot of fun. The kids had fun pushing buttons and crawling all over everything. I got several comments, so there were people who very much appreciated the sensitivity to have the first hour of not, of no horns, because I know one particular person, his grandson has a, the, the noise really bothers and stimulates him in bad ways, so that was a very sensitive thing. I just want to compliment folks. Also, as, as you know, I, I help out with the food bank, and there was a considerable amount of donation made. It tied in with the, you know, they had the postal carrier food drive at the same time, and so there was lots to be picked up in town, and so that was working. The second thing I'd like to make mention, I know several people did attend this evening. The Ice Cream Social is part of the kickoff for the 2040 Plan, and it was wonderful, and it was especially nice. Staff had put together a before and after of some of the projects that have taken place as a result of the plans that this council and this community had developed. You know, we forget what things used to look like, and it was just really interesting to see places that, wow, things are so much better now. And I just want to compliment staff and all the folks that, that attended tonight in the first of months and months and months of data collection. So anyway, thanks so much.
And I even saw a picture of the old Hop Warehouse, that surprised me.
Yes, from the before time.
Yes, very before.
If there's nothing else, somebody send us to dinner, like home adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, thank you very much, have a pleasant evening.